I'd like to make a motion that we approve XSP 1712 and the draft resolution dated January 18, 2018 with...
January 20?
Twenty-one conditions.
Yeah, but the draft resolution was printed December 21st.
Yes, but we're updating... You want to keep the December 21st that's on it?
The last one that was written. If you're referring back to it, that's the date that was on the one you're reading. They haven't rewritten it.
That's a good point. Back to that date.
Yeah, but it says it was presented at a certain meeting.
Yes. Under this resolution, it does...
It always says "as presented on." So it could be the meeting before date, but it's presented to us tonight.
Where does it say that in the resolution?
This is a date that's printed and actually...
Yeah, the resolution was dated.
...that would refer to this letter, which is a date on the paper.
The resolution, to me, doesn't say it was presented on December 21st. It's the resolution that's dated the 21st, even if we're hearing it today.
That's right. That's the one. It doesn't make any difference when you're hearing it. It's what the date that you're referring to this resolution.
Yes, back to the... Yes. So let me amend the date to December 21st, 2017.
I'll amend the second.
Thank you.
Did you... Everything... Okay. And they're twenty-one conditions? Okay, now we got that squared away. Any discussion? Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Town now has a truck wash. New business, SPR 1727. Secretary, take the roll. Here.
Charles Ladd?
Here.
Nick LaFicus?
Here.
Mary Scott?
Here.
Virginia Higley?
Here.
Ken Nelson?
Here.
Linda DeGray?
Here.
Sarah Gruber?
Here.
And Rich Suzak is here.
Okay. We have a letter from the applicant. This is from Frank Toriano, dated Thursday, January 18th, 2018, at 1:43. Sent to Roger O'Brien and company. Subject Toriano Realty, 188 Moody Road, SPR 1727. From the desk of Frank Toriano, Town of Enfield Director of Planning, Roger O'Brien, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut. Dear Mr. O'Brien, please accept this letter as a withdrawal of the application for SPR 1727 Toriano Realty Corporation regarding the property at 188 Moody Road in Enfield. Why we fully intend to reapply for this property in the near future. We wish to withdraw this application at this time. Please feel free to contact me anytime with questions. Regards, Frank Toriano, Toriano Realty Corporation.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we accept the proposal to withdraw...
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice, yeah. SPR 1727?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to accept without prejudice to withdraw. All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. No abstentions. You want... It's all right. We'll get it later. New business. Flood permit, XF LD 17-26. This is Pine Grove, Tanglewood Road Reconstruction, Town of Enfield. Secretary, take the roll.
Charles Dern?
Here.
Charles Ladd?
Here.
Nick LaFicus?
Here.
Mary Scott?
Here.
Virginia Higley?
Here.
Ken Nelson?
Here.
Linda DeGray?
Here.
Sarah Gruber?
Here.
And Rich Suzak is here.
Roger?
Mr. Chairman, it's the town attorney who brings here. This is the first time you've taken up a flood permit. And so I know that some people are kind of looking at it, but in the municipal ordinance, municipal code, there is a section that if you are building in a floodplain, you need to demonstrate certain criteria with respect to that your elevations are such and so forth that you're keeping things out of harm's way. And the town ordinance designates the Planning and Zoning Commission as the entity that gives out flood permits. So as we were bringing that past few months going through every permit and updating forms and so forth, we came across this permit. And so when we came in Pine Grove and Tanglewood and reconsidered the flood maps, there is one little section of that world reconstruction project that's adjacent to a flood hazard zone. And as I pointed out in the aquifer protection meeting, the elevations are such that the public is protected. So we can certify to you that they have met the requirements of the municipal ordinance and therefore recommend that you approve a flood permit pursuant to the municipal code.
There's a letter that you received in your pack. It's dated December 29th. To Roger from Donald Noonns, the road engineer, giving three alternatives. And of course, the last one is preferred, which basically states it avoids or minimizes environmental impacts, including impacts to adjacent wetlands in the floodplain area.
So we approve?
So I would agree with the three alternatives that were presented in that letter. That would be the best also.
Do we have any plans or is it just the two pages that we got?
No, you just have to agree... Yes, we went through the plans for Tanglewood under the aquifer protection.
Okay, got it.
And...
So this intersection road project has meant to wetlands with a wetland permit and went to your folks as aquifer protection. And now this is the third go around on it for a flood permit.
Actually, yeah, right. We have an approval letter here or no? Well, no, there's no...
No, there's no approval permit. It's just a motion to approve the flood permit as indicated on the drawings as presented at the aquifer protection meeting.
I move we approve the flood application, XF LD 17-26, for Pine Grove and Tanglewood Reconstruction Project as it's already been discussed and reviewed in the wetlands and in the aquifer protection.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor? It's unanimous, 7-0-0. We got this taken care of now. Moving on.
Are we going to have a fanfare, Mr. Chairman?
I think we have. It's been several years that we're...
Is Al Dreinen looking in?
Well, he looks like the peach in Hawaii.
For those of you who knew, since I've been here, this has been an issue of where are the chicken regulations? So they're now on your desk.
This came about because...
Oh, you were here.
No, but I'm saying the very first day I was here, the very first meeting I came to, then Vice... Then Second Vice Chair Al Dreinen said, "Where are the chicken regulations?" And then Charlie Ladd said, "Some students, long gone and graduated, and they can't have chickens, and where are they?" So...
This came about because Donna Corbin-Sabinski's daughter, or she asked me if they could do that, and I made the presentation back then on behalf of her because she was starting as a student at the Wag Center in Suffield. And they're required to do something in the animal area. And I asked that time, and then she's long graduated and gone on to college. So I...
My granddaughter has a...
Donna would know how that was.
She's a junior here now.
And the students there that come from Enfield or any areas are required to do something in the animal zone area. And that was my idea at that time.
So in September, we gave you a draft, and then we tweaked it a little bit before sending it out this week. So I believe it says like September revised January. What the... What it basically... We tried to do is in one point, it was referring to chickens, and then it was referring to hens, and then it was referring to fowl. And so we tried to standardize it as chickens slash fowl so there'd be no confusion. And then roosters are prohibited unless you're on a farm of three acres. So there's no magic to anything that's in here. It's what the commission believes is appropriate in your town. And so this started out by Jen downloading the Suffield Chicken Regulations. Because as we've read the history of what happened before, this commission actually approved some chicken regulations. And then the then-town attorney, Kevin Denine, said that they somehow rather didn't pass muster. And then this commission said, "Well, let's go find some from some other town so that we can have something that the town attorney would pass muster on." And so then it, I guess Suffield took a while to pass theirs, and then they finally did. And then this commission was off on other things. And anyhow, that's why it never ever got back here.
We had a fabulous commission, minor commission, that sat down and worked on it.
They didn't please the town attorney either.
They didn't please the town attorney either.
So...
I don't know what it took us till now. So any suggestions?
I have one, well, really two. But under... I thought it was very well put together. Kudos to you guys for doing such a great job. It's easy for the public to understand. It lays it all out. Under 4.60, .10, .3 number and type of chickens allowed, instead of up to five, I would suggest saying no more than five. It's just a very small tweak, but then you don't have to say, "Well, is it five chickens? What about we have five chickens and five ducks?" You know, so...
Our maximum of five?
Yeah. However, it's best said...
Chicken slash fowl.
And the other thing is you laid out where they can put the chicken coop, which is good, and, you know, the responsibilities of the homeowner. The only thing I would like to bring to your attention is that they're usually small. And small doesn't require a building permit. So you might want to have a zoning permit. That way, it gives you a handle on where they put it. Just a thought.
Any further?
Yeah, I have one small... Well, a couple of small points, but the table where it says number of chickens or fowls, when it says greater than three acres and then it says farm, that's not a number of chicken or fowl. So I guess I would just say...
That would come... Well, what they mean there is comes under the farm regulations.
Right.
So I add the word regulations?
Yeah, something like that, just to... Or C-section, whatever, the farm regulation.
That's a good point. In our mind, we're just thinking three acres as a farm, but your point is we need to point that out.
Right. And then my next... I'm sorry. My next point, I guess, is it says roosters in 4.60, .10, .3. It says roosters are prohibited on properties less than three acres. And then later on, it says roosters are limited to farms. So it seems to me that you can sort of have it in one place or the other, or at least say roosters are prohibited unless on a farm.
Yeah. When we were doing this, Rick, who has to enforce it, said, "It doesn't hurt to tell them twice, no roosters." But, you know, it's your... However, the commission wants it worded, that's how it will be worded.
I think we leave it that way because...
I just got a spell check. Plural of fowl is foul. No S.
That's true.
No fowls?
Only in baseball.
That's in baseball.
Well, if you've ever been to Scotland, instead of... In Scotland, instead of saying curb your dog, they say don't foul your dog.
Or your dog's yard.
Okay. Any further?
I just have one more thing. Under section 4.60, .10, .3, that second paragraph is a little bit confusing, where it says, "Five additional chickens or fowls may be kept on properties one acre or more after the first quarter acre in size." I'm thinking that maybe what we really want to do is change that to, "Five additional chickens or fowls may be kept on properties for each additional acre for properties greater than one acre, as indicated in table below." That would be a lot clearer.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, if we can sort of make that kind of modification for that statement, I think it would just clarify it.
That's cleaner. Go ahead, Ken.
I would just... Under the 4.60, .10, .3, the table, quarter acre and up, you can have five chickens. People are going to come in here and say, "I live in Thompsonville. I live on a 50 by 100 lot. How many chickens can I have?" It should state in here, anything below a quarter acre, chickens or fowl are not allowed. And it doesn't say nothing about below a quarter acre.
The keeping of chickens...
I think that the first paragraph or the first sentence in that paragraph, it says, you know, "A maximum of five chickens or fowls of any breed may be kept on residential zone properties of at least one quarter acre in size. If it's not at least one quarter acre in size, you're not allowed to do that."
Under...
He's just saying...
It's already in there.
Just saying added.
There's no harm... There's no harm to put it in the table.
The farmer putting it, just saying no chickens allowed.
It's just going to avoid...
But look at 4.60...
A lot of people going in their office saying, "Well, what can I have under a quarter acre?"
Yeah, but it's...
Because they're not going to...
It's the same thing as double, saying it twice.
All right, fine.
Yes.
If you look at 4.60, .10, .2 locations allowed, it says on any lot, you know, where you live, which is at least one quarter acre or 10,890 square feet.
Doesn't do any harm to repeat it several times.
No, no, it doesn't do any harm, but it's like, you know, if you've got a 50 by 100 lot...
But people are going to look at the chart, as Kenny says, and that's where...
Simple. That's what they're going to see.
Yep.
Got to tell them everything.
I guess I have one more question or one more, I guess, point for the commission to consider, which is in 4.60, .10, .4, the second to last sentence, it says a building is required, and then there's a helpful sort of example of what kind of building that may be. I don't know if the commission would want anything that says an enclosed building or a fencing... Sort of fencing is enough. I know that they're...
No, you haven't had some...
An enclosed, okay. I just wanted to make sure that there was no other criteria we wanted to add for that. I don't think so. I just wanted to raise it. We could certainly interpret the word building as we want, whereas the enforcement officer would want, but I just wanted to raise it.
Most would be in a coop and a set of...
That's why I'm suggesting...
I think in early a draft, we had building and then parentheses enclosure at one point. Because you really don't need a building as long as... A lot of times, it's an enclosure with a fence or with a...
It says it, Roger. Look under...
We have a roost inside.
First sentence in 4.60, .10, .5.
It's a chicken tractor.
Any enclosure or building used for housing chickens.
So we could just repeat that, building or enclosure.
And enclosed, yeah.
And another question. What's a chicken tractor?
A what?
A chicken tractor.
Yeah.
He pulls a little tractor.
Says, "I.e. chicken coop, including chicken tractors or hen houses."
I think there should be structures or something.
That's right out of the Suffield regulations, so...
Well, they can make mistakes.
I've never seen one.
I'll claim ignorance on that one.
So do I.
Couple... I have a question. There's nothing in here, and I don't know if we control that, but disposal of waste?
Yeah, it says that they have to maintain it in a healthy manner, and I imagine if they weren't, the health department would take care of that.
And the other is the storage of food. A lot of places will say that the food has to be stored in metal containers or something of that type. I don't know if that should be in there or if that's up to them.
If they don't, after the first time the rats get in there, they'll put one of their butters in there.
Well, I don't know.
Rodents will get in if they don't.
Would DPW or Water Pollution Control have a problem with disposal? I don't know.
No, if you have a dead animal on your property in a road, the town Public Works tells you to throw it in your trash can, so I assume that stuff goes the same place.
Well, that's what I was wondering, if the waste will go in the trash cans or...
Along with the dog stuff.
Do you know, Ken?
Chicken poop is a high commodity for gardens.
Yes, it is.
It's one of the best fertilizers there is out there, so I don't think they're going to have a hard time getting rid of it.
But if they don't... Yeah, but if they don't get rid of it, it's a problem.
It's going to be a smell hazard, too. And who's enforcing?
Very odorous.
Is this a zoning, if you enforce it?
Yeah. And under your zoning code, you've got, you know, you can't emit... You know, you can't have light shining your neighbors. You can't have smell, you know, what have you. So that would be a zoning violation complaint.
All right. So then I just throw it out there in case...
Well, we have a section here that covers that anyways. 4.60, .10, .7, odor and waste covers that.
I think it's a...
Along that line, in terms of... I think that one of those words should be changed. It says, "The property owner will maintain the chicken fowl environment in such a manner as not to create nuisance to adjoining properties due to odor and waste, not from."
Yes.
So I think that that should be to adjoining properties.
Do you think that would cover runoff in case the chickens are on a property that's a little higher than adjacent properties and there's rain?
Well, I think the neighbor will complain, and then it goes to enforcement.
Wash it down. Okay.
Now you made me think of what.
Are you saying that something flows downhill?
Maybe.
I do.
Yeah, that's right.
Fertilizer.
I think the suggestion's made. It's a terrific job, and I...
If you're finished with all your comments, then we would look for a resolution to, with the changes you've suggested, for us to send it to the Capital Region Council of Governments and schedule it for public hearing.
So moved.
So moved.
Yeah.
So motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? You got all the suggestions on it?
I think we will, and we'll send you out a draft. And anybody picks up something that we overlooked, let us know, and we'll correct it.
Okay, we'll work it that way. Okay, all in favor of the motion? It's good to go. It's unanimous. Wonderful. Everybody's happy.
Amen.
The chickens are on the way.
It was an excellent resolution.
Well, that's true. Well, that's not in the regulations. I don't know. We're going to have to do that.
We thought, "Sorry, close."
Okay. Other business, designation of representative and alternate representative of Capital Region. Who's the Capital Region representative now?
Additionally, Mr. Chairman, the least senior member of the commission has been designated.
Well, it's always been an alternate. It's been an alternate because we don't want the regulars to go, but if an alternate wants a job... And they meet, unfortunately, the same night we meet, so...
They changed... They rotate it, so there are like... They're like maybe five out of every 12 meetings that this commission could go to without missing a meeting. Because we asked them to, remember? So they rotate the meetings now.
The other thing was that when we went, I think we had one vote, and Hartford had about six or five votes. So it didn't really make too much difference what we had to say. But they also... Al got them, or you did. Someone got them to mail to us all the activities that were going on anyway. So if you don't... If they have your email address, you should be receiving it.
Excuse me?
We have two members right now. They might want to do it again.
Excuse me, Roger, did you get my email? I sent it from work, so it might have went into your spam.
So do the representatives that are on paper still want to do it again?
Because I sent you the form... I filled out the form and sent it.
You know, I'd be willing to give up my position to Sarah Gruber.
And I think Sarah should come with me.
Yeah, because again, normally it's on our same date, but, you know, I make a motion that, you know, the regular member for that commission be Sarah Gruber.
All right, Sarah?
Oh, yeah.
Do you need a second?
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Do you need an alternate or just...
Linda DeGray's the alternate right now. And I'll make a motion that Linda DeGray stays the alternate. Second.
Okay. All in favor?
And procedurally, technically, it's a recommendation to the town council, and then the town council will vote on it. But I don't know that they've...
I modified that motion.
Huh?
I modified the motion for it to be a recommendation.
But I don't think the town council has ever not taken your recommendation on it.
I don't know that they ever have.
They don't want to go.
And so, Roger, you send that information over or... Okay, thank you. I guess once the...
We'll give you the form. You fill out the form. We forward the form to the town manager's office, and they put it on the agenda for the council.
Great, thank you.
Do you want to stay there? I could... I'd stay there, yes.
Do we also need to appoint the representative of the economic development or whatever commission that is now?
That is your prerogative.
Okay. And Rich says he'd like to stay as that. So anybody want to make a nomination?
I'll make mine.
I second it.
Okay. All in favor? Rich would be doing it, okay? It's unanimous. So that's taken care of. Other business, item B, Connecticut Mulch. Let me get my paper here.
In your packet or in your mail-out, there was a request...
I called Roger on this because there's a couple of items here. You got a letter from Connecticut Mulch that quotes possibly other people. It doesn't say. And I asked Roger for, "Who's the soil expert that gave the opinion?" It didn't say. They're saying they have some soil expert that they quote says the soil is thus and such. And I wanted to know also who the arborist or a landscaper or that was. Now, if they're quoting Michael, then, okay, we know it was Michael, and I don't know if he did the soil, too, or not. But so I asked Roger if we could possibly have Michael's letter to them, because that's not enclosed either. Most of you old... I was going to say old timers. Most of you people that have been here a while know the problems we've had with Connecticut Mulch.
So basically, what happened here was that the gentleman kept saying that his trees wouldn't grow. And so he wanted to have the... He wanted to change the type of trees. And Michael is a landscape architect. He went down, met with them, and he wrote the letter for him. So the original letter that we did receive was Rick... Rick asked Michael this morning what, you know, based upon your conversation. And so Michael wrote the letter that the gentleman sent to Rick asking for it. So it was Michael's recommendation that the... Or conclusion that the soil is too dense for healthy drainage, and he did recommend the change in the trees.
Are those the trees that he recommended?
Yes.
Because the only...
So he recommended it. So there's two items here. One is the gentleman would like to have his conditions of approval modified such that the trees that were on his original plan that was approved are substituted for by these... By the trees as recommended. And then the second part of it, which we hadn't brought forward, was he wanted his bond partially released. So we haven't brought... We never bring forward the bond release because we felt that the first decision had to be made as... And the recommendation that was... That did come from Michael was that the client replaced white pine with willow river batch or wax myrtle. So we did confirm that.
Where was the wax where that they put it?
There is a... There was a sketch. You have that sketch as to where they were going? There was a sketch in... Originally sent to you. There is, there was a sketch, you have that sketch as to where they were going? There, there was a sketch in, originally sent to you.
Oh, I couldn't make it up, that's all.
So there's, there's a...
Oh, where the exes are?
Well, the exes, they claim are trees they put in, they didn't have to put in.
But, I just got two points, or a couple, something to say, in terms of, I believe that this, 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 this application was approved as, as an agricultural, agricultural type of use, so, so I'm not sure if they're doing agricultural, you know, work out there, how they, they could not be able to grow trees for, you know, an application that was approved for agricultural use, in terms of, you know...
We, we did ask the gentleman to come tonight, so they could answer those questions.
Yeah, because I guess I just have a problem with that, in terms of, if it's agricultural type of, you know, usage for that particular site, that, you know, they should be doing agricultural work, and if they're doing agricultural work, they should be able to grow trees, or, or else there's something wrong with the premise as to what we're looking at here, so...
They're not grinding up the trees they grow, that's what...
Well, I think that they, they could actually, you know, improve the soil's condition so that they can, you know, actually nurture the trees that they have there.
What they did, they went in, years ago, they went in and had ground up asphalt and spread it, grow to...
But they, they should not have used that as, you know, a, a base to grow things, in terms of, you know, anybody who's doing agricultural work knows that they...
Well, they did.
Well, again, I don't think that that's our problem, you know, in terms of, you know, I think that, you know, they, they should be, you know, recognize the fact that if, if they did something wrong, and all of a sudden that the, the, the thing that they did wrong is, is preventing them from achieving a certain, you know, basis for approval, that they should rectify, you know, the, the, the things that were done incorrectly, and, and actually improve them to, the fact that they're done right.
Well, you could tell them to haul in some good loom that the trees would grow in.
Better ask forgiveness than it is permission, that's the way they operate.
Well, again, I think that, you know, again, I'm, I'm, I'm willing to go with whatever the commission says, but I think that we should give them an opportunity to at least come in and address us, or at least tell us, you know, why they think it's, you know, it's not good. In terms of, I read one report that says it's, it's hardpan, and now all of a sudden I hear that, well, it's, it's really, you know, a mixture of, you know, asphalt and something else, so, you know, something's not consistent, in terms of...
They would need, if they're wanting to modify their conditions of approval, they would need to come in for a modification. This isn't something you can just discuss, because they, they went with the conditions of approval, and now they say, oh, you know, well, what happens when these don't grow?
Can we also have a brown mucklebowl?
Just, just my opinion.
Well, I, I think they're, I think they consider this a mod, I mean, they, they consider this a request for modification, I mean, you approved X numbers of pine trees, and they're saying, are you okay if we substitute these other types of trees? If you're not, you know, it's a simple answer, no.
But, but I think the pine trees were there for a screen, in terms of, you know, when, when you look at the, the layout of a pine tree, you know, theoretically, you know, they grow dense enough where, all of a sudden, they're screening, you know, the property from, you know, you know, visual, you know, defects, so, so now, all of a sudden, if we go with, you know, another, you know, tree that has a trunk, and it has, you know, you know, a leafy arbor above, it doesn't really screen, you know, along the sightlines that, that most people would see.
It was the people on King Court that complained and wanted the screen.
Right, so, so I think that, you know, what we do need to do is approve something that would, again, screen, and, you know, make sure that whatever we get there is consistent with, you know, what the, you know, I, I guess the, the public hearing or whatever occurred, and, and why those, you know, certain modifications were made, or there's certain conditions were applied.
I guess I have a comment, is the commission, does the commission generally refund bonds as each plant survives?
No.
And do we wanna, do we want that to be a policy?
Never given partial...
Right, so that's my point.
No, not gonna do that.
In fact, I think we had something recently with you, Roger, wanted a partial bond.
Well, no, he did write a, write a letter to me recently, in which he said, so my trees didn't grow, so give me my money back. Those, I'm not, you know, I'm not paraphrasing.
I don't know whether he's, he's putting their own, the trees that didn't grow were along Mullen Road, then?
I guess they're on that berm.
Because?
Yes.
You gotta be on the berm.
Yep.
He said they all grew but five.
So it was what was in the berm that brought in?
Yeah. Says it turns into hardpan in the summer, and mud in the winter.
So it was the soil that they brought in to build the berm, that's a problem.
Yeah.
I guess you could have moved the whole thing, berm out, and bring in soil that would grow, and I thought what it was, was in the natural ground soil, that's why I said to Rich about the...
Well, it's, it's, this whole issue is totally the, the discretion of the commission. You approved his landscaping plan with certain types of trees, you have a request in front of you, the gentleman was invited to come tonight, he's not here, you can...
I remember that was approved.
You know, you can...
Oh, yeah, it was, very much so.
Use your judgment.
Well, as Rich says, I guess that's up to the commission, I...
So if he replaces the five trees that died, he's done, he met all his requirements, he can get his bond.
Yeah.
So I say he replaces the five trees that died, and, and other subdivisions I've seen where this commission's required certain trees planted down the road, the power company came down less than a year later and cut them all down, because they were told to be planted underneath the power lines, and I just, I mean, picking types of trees and stuff like that, I could see screening, but replace the five trees, he gets his bond back, it's done, if they die, they die.
Well, no, you have to, you have to wait one, your rules require them, that they, you have to wait one full growing season, so they would, and that's...
After replacing the five trees?
Yes.
So if one tree dies in 10 months, he's gotta wait another year?
For, for that one tree, yeah.
He's gotta replace it.
Well, that's what he's asking for, he's asking for a partial bond release, because all the trees live but five, and we're gonna hold his bond for another year for five trees?
Oh, you don't know.
It's gotta be 25 to 50 trees here.
It says a total of 15.
Well, he's got four, too, because he's got them along the back.
He says that somewhere, total of 15 are required, and, so I think that...
And the rear and side yard.
Yeah, so I think that there's, there's more than five that are, that haven't grown, I think there's five in one location, and there's possibly 10 in another location that haven't matured.
Well, I just counted 25 on the plan that we have across the front.
Well, I, I think that he need, again, you know, we, I guess we, we can all go out there and take a look at it, but if, if he clarifies exactly which trees they are, or somebody's here to, to actually inform us...
That's why I say I can't read this thing, it's not...
Right, it, it's not so much about the trees as it is the bond, this commission just said that they'll hold part of the bond for the amount of trees that died.
No, we don't release it, we don't...
So if one tree dies in 10 months from now, you're gonna continue to hold his entire bond?
Well, he's not gonna plant them until the spring, can't plant them now.
That's why I said 10 months.
Yeah, it is, it has, if I could, the, the commission has partially reduced bonds, if, if they have, usually it happens because the bonds were in sections, you know, and they completed the first section, they get the bond back for that section, there's nothing that would prevent the commission, if you so chose, to, to authorize the engineering and planning office to determine how many trees he actually put, and what the value of those was, and recommend a partial release. We didn't do that until this issue of what trees is putting in was resolved, but that's, again, up to the commission, but that's not pending, because he hasn't made a formal application to release a bond, because of the, you know, it became, what, what do you really wanna do, and then why can't the trees grow, and then Michael tried to be helpful, and he went down there and, and said, well, okay, let's try planting something else. So, I mean, I think what you, from my standpoint, you would tonight decide, you want him to replace the pine trees, you're happy with the, the, the recommended trees that Michael suggested might be appropriate, and then, once that decision's made, or you could table it and go look and decide, but this thing's been going around and around in the circles for a while, and I can, I can appreciate the frustration of the customer, and from that standpoint, is we need to at least tell him what it is that he needs to do.
That berm, I think, is back far enough anyhow, I don't think the power lines, well, I don't know if they're on that side of the road, but it's...
Well, the thing about it is that it's not just five trees, it's 15, because if you really read what it says in the letter, the soil on the rear side yard is especially bad, nevertheless, most of the white pine survived as approved in the front yard, there are five missing from the front yard, so we would like to replace white pine with willow river birch or wax myrtle, a total of 15 are required, five in the front and 10 in the rear side yard, so we're looking at 15 trees.
15 trees.
We're not looking at five, so...
Charlie? I think these drawings are confusing.
They are.
Because the first one, it shows all trees to be replaced, and there's like, two, four, six, eight, 12 trees in the first drawing, and then on our second one that they're drawing along Mullen Road, it says highlighted trees to be replaced with birch, and it shows this, all 25 trees are being replaced.
Yeah, thank you.
So I don't know what, if he want, what this is saying, so I think we need to have the, the person come in, who, who has his bond, explain to us how many trees he needs to replace, if it's five, if it's 15, is it 30, is it 40, we don't know, so I think just asking us to do something right now with this, without enough information...
Well, the other issue I, I think, too, is that I wasn't aware that the commission mentioned, the chairman mentioned tonight, was that some of the neighbors requested some of these trees for screening purposes, so it probably ought to notify the neighbors who, you know, that the trees replacements would be different.
Well, I don't know if he's talking about those down towards New King, and those are the ones that came in.
It would've been nice if he had shown up, especially asking for this remedy.
It was the P and Z that wanted the one screened from Mullen Road, but the New King Street people wanted screening, and I, it doesn't say anything about how those trees are, or I can't read this map, the printing's...
All these trees to be replaced with birch.
And in any event...
But then the other thing that Linda said, and I said the map is confusing, you have a circle that says not on plans, current white pine trees, and it's, I don't know what it says, it has a plus, so I don't know what that means, and you got three, eight there?
One, two, three, four, five, six...
Who needs cut?
Seven.
Eight and nine, I don't know.
There's seven there.
It's a confusing drawing, that's all.
It just seems like, it seems like the bond is serving its purpose, which is, you don't, you don't get it back until you plant the trees, I mean, I think that's the whole point, so if he wanted to ask the commission for that relief, he should've come here, and I understand that he has already gone to staff, but with the commission making a decision like that, it would've been nice to be able to get some of these questions answered.
May I suggest that we table this discussion until we get more information?
Motion would be in order if you want it, well...
Make a motion that we table this?
I'm sorry, you can't.
Twenty-five trees to be reported.
Second.
You can't, yeah, I'm sorry, no, it has to be, you can't, Linda, you can't, you're not sitting.
So maybe I make a suggestion that, that we take the approved plan that, in a, in a large version, and we, and we, and we ask them to mark up the trees that would not be planted, and show the trees that would be planted, so you can look at it in a readable format.
There you go, that makes sense.
Yes, what's alive, what didn't make it.
Along with what Rich said.
So.
I, it doesn't matter to me, as long as the tree fulfills a screen, like what you were looking for, is good.
Oh.
I would have a problem, though, if every other tree, or every third tree, was a different tree, and now it just looks like a wild forest growing there, instead of a nice, natural barrier, so if, if I'm reading it right, which none of us can figure out, that he's gonna replace them all, because to me, it's either you put in what we required, all of them, or you replace them all with a suitable tree, and if that tree he wants to replace it with meets the screen requirement...
If only five died out of 30, then the plant, the plant the five.
I agree, that's why I'm saying...
Look at where he's got them highlighted.
Yeah, but he can't have that many highlighted.
Okay, Linda can't make that motion, but somebody can do it.
I'll make a motion that we table the request for, from Connecticut Mulch to modify landscaping requirements of special site plan review 1567.02, until we get some additional information from the applicant.
Second.
Motion's made, seconded, all in favor? Good, it's unanimous. Now, let's see, moving on, correspondence, on your desk, you found some information given to you, and those, those files are very good, in fact, there, I have some on my desk at home, that were given to us on the TOD parts of things, and I don't know if you still have those on, and when we get into the TOD thing, the rest of the commission might, if you can resurrect some of those, be, come in. Now, the other thing that is in here also is a magazine or newsletter, and those are very good, there's nothing that I hit this time, but a lot of times, it's stuff that pertains to what we're doing, and the, he writes a good newsletter. And also in there, and I don't know if we have the money this year, but you have the con, the, yeah, what do you call it?
The annual conference.
Annual conference, down at the...
Aquaturf.
Aquaturf, right, thank you. So give some thought to that, and maybe if there's money in the budget, and they don't take too much, we might be able to go, and that quarterly newsletter is ver, is very Any other correspondence from commissioners? Roger, you, you have in here, and you didn't have it on the agenda, but it could be added, the budget, you wanna go over that, or the, the fees, the fee schedule?
Yeah, I was waiting for, you know, if there were any comments on it, and then we would, I, I, you know, I, looking at the protocol in the past, it appears as though this, this commission recommends fees, and they are sent to the town manager to present to the council, so I don't know if you wanna hold a public hearing on them yourself, or the council will hold a public hearing, or how you wanna do it, but I think the sense I got from the workshop we had on them was that folks agreed that in general, our fees are woefully under, under what they should be, the question is whether we're in the ballpark based upon your, your review of the, the surveyed towns, we tried to be like, not at, you know, not on the low end and not on the high end, and pretty much down the middle in our recommendations, and given the town's budget situation, the, if, if the council was to take these up by the second week in February and adopt them, you would, this is now the building season, and people are gonna be applying, and I think you would get a revenue pop this year, that would help with the budget situation.
Roger, oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Is that the procedure, because I, it's been so long since we changed these, I don't...
Yeah, as far as I know, the, the commission, this commission recommends, every commission recommends their fees, so you wouldn't be recommending zoning board of appeals fees, or in the Mullen fees, you would be recommending all the fees that you have, and then they, because you, you are most knowledgeable about what the fee covers, and then it goes to the town manager, and the town manager is free to exercise whatever judgment he, he wants to exercise with it.
I'll go with the council, but you mentioned public hearing.
Well, that's, I'm just saying, I, you know, it's because I've never, I haven't been here when you raised fees, and I think the last time you raised fees in Enfield was like 2008, '07 or '08, or something, it's been a while, so it's like, whatever you, whatever you're comfortable with.
I was just trying to, Ginny, do you remember, did we have public hearing on it?
No.
No, I don't think so either, we decided to send it on.
We just discussed it, and then, and then asked the planner to send it to the town council.
Because we're having this discussion, I'll make a motion that we amend our agenda to add, you know, under, you know, I guess, section...
to add, you know, under, you know, I guess, section 11A, that we discuss the planning division's schedule of fees.
Second.
Motion's made. Seconded. All in favor? Unanimous.
Roger, I had a question for you. At the workshop, I think a couple of questions came up about what would make the most revenue sense. And I guess in other words, how much staff time was spent on each application so that we can make sure that staff time is being compensated with the fee and all the others sort of most common types of applications you get and whether that makes sense from a revenue perspective. I don't know if that's something just that the town manager would do, but I know I'd raise that as a question for you.
Yeah. I don't think that the fee is ever going to cover the amount of staff time.
But yeah, I mean, it's not going to...
But like a special permit is more, and the question from Ken came up earlier today about the difference between a special permit and a site, and a site plan. And a, just in terms of the fee, a site plan doesn't require a public hearing, so we don't have to advertise it. The special permits have a lot, the commission has a lot more discussion, discretion. And you look at a wider range of items in considering whether you're going to approve it, which gets you delving into more, more items and which sometimes takes two and three nights of public hearings on things and re-advertising sometimes. And so, and then processing a special permit is extra time because the secretary gets involved in the actual preparing the document that gets filed on the land records, whereas a site plan is not filed on the land records. And so, there is, there's a lot more involved in, in considering and approving a special permit and processing it. So, that's why a special permit fee is, is higher. A site plan is pretty much, if you meet the zoning envelope in terms of setback and height and area and so forth, you're, you're pretty much, you know, are approving it the way it is. And it's, doesn't require the filing of anything on the land records in terms of extra processing. The big issue I think you have on fees is either do away with the $5 or bump it up to 50. Given the, given the fiscal situation, I don't think, I don't think $50 is going to prevent somebody from applying for something. And $5 is like a nuisance to collect. And they, and people, they actually chuckle when, you know, you tell them what, what the fee is and you say, "That'll be $5, please."
$50 wouldn't cover the state fee.
No, it doesn't. And so...
So, you'd get 60.
So, the town actually would have to collect 110 and give 60 to the state.
58, right, okay.
So, it goes from $5 to 110?
Yes.
Sixty, $65.
It goes from 65 to, to 110.
The way it was done before, it wasn't a permit, it was an application or a registration, like the zoning permits.
Can we come back to these?
Okay.
I know, well, we're getting back on, they're going off on state and so forth. I know, well, it has to do with it.
Part of the whole.
Well, Charlie, if you don't cover the state...
So, if you're comfortable with them in terms of recommending they move forward, then we will move them forward.
I just wanted to know the procedure because you had mentioned a public hearing and that's all I remember is we voted on them and they were sent forward to the council. So, any other suggestions or...
I just, I sound like a broken record. I'm concerned about the $50. If you do $50, you're already in the hole because you have to give 58 to the state.
But we're getting 65 already?
No, we're getting 5. We used to get 65.
We have to collect the money for the state.
We don't. For home office, for home occupation, they're applications, they're not permits.
So, what are you saying? You want all the 50s raised to what?
60.
All right.
Because you're losing $8.
Well, we'll make that motion.
Okay. I move that we change the 50s to 60.
So, we're going up $5?
No, we're going up $10.
10.
The state takes $58. You're, you're...
No, but, but commissioner, we're not including the state fee in that. So, you'd actually be adding an additional $10 over what is being proposed.
Okay.
So, I'm comfortable staying with 50.
All right, as long as somewhere it says that it's not included, the state.
The $60 fee for the state is something separate.
Right. But you, you want to make that clear before you send it to the council.
Right, it will be.
Okay.
Are you withdrawing? Well, you didn't, no, it wasn't seconded.
It wasn't seconded.
Okay. So, any discussion on this presentation that Roger's given us?
Enfield right now is having a very hard time attracting businesses. And we need to do whatever we can do to make Enfield appealing. By raising our fees to be equal or more than surrounding areas, and we have such a limited access to put new businesses coming to town, Windsor's crushing us. And I guess I just don't believe, you know, raise fees and it's going to help. It's not, it's going to hurt. So, I don't know. I guess I would ask for direction from the council if they would entertain raising the fees to attract new businesses. Because that's basically what this is. You know, anybody who comes to Enfield to do business is going to have to pay more. And as far as I'm concerned, if you're bringing jobs to Enfield, come on in. It should, they should waive the fees. So, I guess I don't support this until I hear a direction from the council telling us they want us to raise our fees.
Well, the mayor did ask us to look at fees. We were all, we were all asked to look at fees. And just to correct what you said, we're not making them equal or more than the surrounding communities. If you look at them, we're halfway point between, right now, we're the lowest of all of the, all of the towns we looked at. And, and some are triple and quadruple what we're charging. And what we did is we, we said, here's the lowest, here's the highest, and we tried to go right down the middle. So, we're at the midpoint.
And as you explained at the...
Actually, looking at the towns that you, that you had, some of them are so small that I wouldn't even want to put my fees with them because, and they have, probably have no industry.
Right. And Roger, what you mentioned at the workshop was, we haven't changed our fees in 10 years. So, I mean, it would be one thing if every year we hike our fees more and more. But we're woefully behind based on the research that the planning office did. And I think you guys did a great job of identifying comparable towns that they're all charging way more than we're charging. We haven't done it in years, so we can't say that we're following this money. We, we're not getting any of it. And it's, I think it's a cost of doing business in every town. And I'm not sure that the relative difference in Enfield of having our fees stay the same would really deter someone from doing business when right next door, they're charging much more than, more than us.
It's a special use permit, for example. You have down, the new fee would be 390. You have the range from 250 to 850. And 390 really isn't going to be a...
But if we're losing business to Windsor at the, being the lowest fees in, in the area, what difference does it make?
Well, it's more than fees, trust me.
Oh, yeah, that's it.
Some of the other things maybe we got to fix.
They got land. They got old tobacco land.
I guess underlying all of this is that the town's missing a lot of money for whatever reason, for many different reasons. And this is just one thing we can do to literally just stay with the times. And by the times, I mean amend them for the first time in, you said, 10 years or so.
Kind of equals the playing field to be right.
And to the commissioner's concern, commissioner, this, it goes as a recommendation from this commission to the council. And if the council, after reviewing it, doesn't want to adopt them, they don't have to adopt them.
Now, can they, and I don't know the answer to this either, can they change line items or they have to accept the whole?
Oh, yeah, they can modify them anywhere they want.
So, actually, then Kenny, I guess they could...
Right, alter it.
What we're doing is we're giving them, our review of what other communities charge. And the, the question I was asked by the mayor was, what are our fees and what are our costs of processing the applications? Our cost of processing the application's a little difficult to get. But in looking at fees, it was pretty apparent to us that it was time to bump them up a little bit. As far as, you know, trying to make Enfield competitive, I think, you know, looking at the people coming through and, and the tax incentive policies that the town has put in and the tax incentives that have been granted in the last year, I think Enfield is, is well on the road to being more competitive.
Is that clock right? Okay, well...
I might make a motion that we forward a favorable recommendation to the change of our schedule of fees to the town council for review.
Second.
Motion's made. Seconded.
Town manager.
The town manager.
Well, through the town manager to the council, yes. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? Unanimous. Okay, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Okay, going on, commissioners, any commissioners' correspondence? Hearing none. Before you do your thing, I have a couple of things just to clear up. We have so many new people. I don't know, I had asked you to do...
Introduce this guy for our vast TV audience?
No, I welcome the people out there on TV land. We welcomed Ken Nelson to our commission. And most of you know Kenny from being on the council. And he's going to be quite a welcome member of the commission. And I guess we welcomed him before, we welcome him again in front of the public.
Yeah.
We've had a lot of new ones and Kenny being one. We all have ID photos. And would you make arrangements, please, with the police department and give them the dates so that they can go up there and get their photo IDs so that when you go on property, that you can ID yourself as a member legally to be there?
Yeah. You just have to show up in the police department between 8:30 and 5:00 Monday to Friday. And they will, they will, you know, and show, show something that says you're on P&amp;Z, I guess. We should probably give you a letter or something.
I thought that they had, that the towns traded off with the machine and that it wasn't always there. Did the town actually get its own machine yet?
Because we just had some ZBA members go, right? And that's what we were told.
Oh, okay.
If you want to call ahead to make sure so you don't make a trip, but we were told if you just go there between 8:30 and 5:30, they will print you up an ID.
I'd like an appointment if you can make one.
Yeah.
They do like an appointment. So, that, that's one thing. A second, going through my, my booklet, you need new lists in the booklets for the meeting dates for 2018, the ones that are in there, 2017. You need the P&amp;Z list with the phone numbers. I know you passed out some to some of us, but not all of them. And they should be in the book. And the commission, you have the listed other commissioners and their names and phone numbers. We have a list of those too for the other commissions if we wanted to get in touch with them.
Yeah, I know Raquel did, put it together. We just got to put it in the book.
And the P&amp;Z alternates need a new, a new rotation, which we don't have. And it should start with Linda. And then it would...
I would think you would start with...
We actually put it together. You instructed us, Mr. Chairman, to put it together by alphabetical.
He would be, yeah, he's, he's...
Yeah, we did do a new alternate schedule and we'll get it to you.
It doesn't make any difference, he's not here. I don't care. As long as it's in alphabetical order.
It was, it was, it was in alphabetical order. So, D is first, right? And then G and then...
G, M, O.
Yeah. No, G, M, O, it's salazai, so that's S. So, G is DGS.
DGS, right.
Yeah.
Okay. And if he's out a lot, at least, one of them anyway. So, those are...
No, he's, he's only away this month. He'll be back.
The other thing is because we still get them and I guess with the budget, where I've asked for the, to go into modernized and use computers or whatever, do you have bags that we could carry? They used to give us bags. This is from the social services, but it was in a town, town Enfield bag to carry all this stuff in. I don't know if there are any laying around. Well, I don't know where they came from, but if they're laying around, just give them something. But I had asked the former, the mayor for, to be modernized and it would save them a lot of money. We wouldn't have to go through all these papers. The councils had, had the tablets for quite a while.
Well, I know the Board of Ed has a bunch of them that they're not using. So, maybe we can request, you know...
Well, it would be nice if we had them. Then you'd have to give me a lesson on how to use them. That's all right. I mean, let's modernize if we can. It would save them an awful lot of money as far as paper.
We did recommend that and we have had some conversations about it. I think, you know, other, other issues with the budget right now are taking precedent.
Oh, absolutely. I understand that.
But it's, it's on the, it's on the, it's on the conversation.
Okay, Roger.
The, a couple of, there's one item before I go to the report, and that is on, under unresolved issues, there are, there's the matter of the Enfield High School Certificate of Zoning Compliance. The responsibility of an applicant is to submit the as-built drawings when the project is done. We did receive a set of as-built drawings, all but a photometric. The photometric that was included in the as-bills was simply the Xerox copy or the, you know, a copy of the original photometric. It was not the photometric as exists as-built. So, in September, we requested of the Enfield Building Committee, the architect and the engineer, to supply us with the, with a photometric. That has not been coming, come forward. And there's a dispute between the architect and the building construction people, Gilbain, as to who's responsible for it. And the, they're now saying neither one of them are responsible for it and they're going to have to go back to the building committee. So, I'm just reporting it out. As you know, in the Krick School, the issue was we didn't get accurate as-bills. We still have neighbors who complained that the lighting from the stair tower is protruding onto their property. The photometric that you, this commission approved, that light was not supposed to protrude. And so, the only way that we can determine whether they meet, they meet their, they met their approval is to get a photometric. We don't have one and they're now going like this as to who's responsible. It's my responsibility to keep you informed about that. The, and the neighbors, there's a group of neighbors who have put together a PowerPoint presentation that they would like permission to be put on your agenda to come and speak to, where they want to show you what happens to them, to their properties from the light from the stair tower. I have asked them if they could, I've been asking them for several months if they could wait till we got the photometric so that we would know what the actual lighting conditions were. And they're sort of getting frustrated because it's been months and, and we don't, we don't have it.
Roger, I would say bring them in, let them do their presentation and pride the others to get the photometric in here.
So, that's what I'm, I'm just putting, putting it out there. I mean, it's a beautiful high school. It's a, it's a, certainly a testament to the building committee of the great work they did. Committee of the great work they did. I wrote a letter to that effect. There were a few things that needed to be done, they had to replace some dead trees, they had to put up a fence, there were some, you know, there were some other things we had to do, but we're down to, they didn't give us the photometric, and their neighbors are complaining that the light is, is leaving the site, and it shouldn't be. The only way we're gonna resolve that is by getting a photometric, seeing what it says, and going out and observing. If the, if they're not in compliance with their original approval, this commission will have to decide what you want to do about that. But until such time as that happens, we cannot sign off on a certificate of zoning compliance.
Well, then that's, I guess you don't sign off.
Do they have their CO yet?
Well, they have a, they have a CO for the building, but they don't have a CO, overall CO for the project. And they can't get a CO for the project until such time as a certificate of zoning compliance is signed off on. And that's why we're not signing off on it, because we don't, they haven't met their conditions of approval. And so, all I'm saying is, I don't know who's gonna take responsibility, but the architect and the building construction manager are both going like this, and we're not getting it, and so whether it's the Building Committee, or the, the town council, or the Board of Ed, or somebody, we have a beautiful school building that I would like to close the chapter out on.
It would be nice to do that. Is it time for the town attorney to get involved?
Well, I mean, it's your approval, and I'm your agent, and so I'm just responsible, my, my responsibility is to tell you that this issue is still there, and look to you for direction as to what you want to do. If you want me to put on your future agenda, the neighbors to come, who want to come in and speak to the issue, that's one way to approach it. The other way is to ask the school building committee to come in and explain why they haven't given it to you. I mean, I don't, I don't know what you want to do about it.
Well, I guess it's my, my thought, and obviously the commission has its own thought, but I would, if we're not gonna get the photometric, and nobody's taking responsibility for it, I would still want to hear what the neighbors have to say, because that, how else are we gonna learn unless we see something, even if it's not the exact item that we would want to see? So I'd be interested, and I would welcome the thoughts of the rest of the commission.
I'd say bring the neighbors in anyway.
Yeah, I think so too. I agree. I think they need to come in.
We'll put them on the agenda.
Ken had an opinion too. What were you gonna say, Kenny?
Has the general contractor been paid in full? If he hasn't...
That's up to the Building Committee.
That's the Building Committee, unfortunately.
Right, well, that's the way you force them to do it, and, you know, how do you get a zoning compliance?
But if they don't care, I don't know.
I'd love to see what the neighbors have to say.
Because his job ain't done until it's CO'd, and he's out the door, so...
So they shouldn't have paid him, but who knows if they did or not.
Well, I don't think, if he don't have a CO on the building yet, I would hope he's not paid in full.
Yeah, he does have a CO on the building, Roger.
There's a CO on the building, not on the project, and so the, and that's one of the issues, is the, Gilbain is saying that, well, we got a CO on the building, so we're done.
Got a full CO or a TC?
No, but he doesn't have a full CO.
He's got a TC.
So, and, so we have documentation going back to the very beginning when this was approved, that the gentleman, Amar, who's still with Gilbain, was in the planning office, and the conditions of approval, it said he had to give us the ASBIL when it was done, he signed for and acknowledged.
So we still don't have an ASBIL?
But we don't, well, what we got was an ASBIL from the architect, and, but what was stapled to the back was the photometric that was in the original approval package, but it was not the ASBIL photometric, you know, the photometric which says, where does the light go, that, you know, when, what is the foot candles, 100 feet from the property, and 200 feet, and so forth. And you had a standard, when you said, when you approved the project, and you, you, this board said to the neighbors, the light will not intrude onto your property, and nobody wants to give us a photometric that says it doesn't. And the neighbors say, it does.
Well, I bring, as I say, bring the neighbors in, and it'll go from there.
Okay.
And maybe Roger can find out, to Kenny's point, whether they, the contractor's been paid or not.
Has anybody reached out to the chairman of the Building Committee?
The chairman of the, for months and months and months, has been CC'd on every correspondence between our office and the, and the architect and the engineer. He's been on every, every, CC'd on every correspondence.
And he can't get them to move?
I'm not gonna speak to, for who can or can't do anything, all I'm reporting is that I can't get a photometric filed with my office.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Roger.
Mr. Chairman, you've asked us to sort of highlight in a short manner, and we will be short, it's, but it, thank goodness, it's only 20 to 9. This is, these are some of the highlights of things, and then thinking about it after we talked about it in workshop the other day, there's always things that we forget, and like, one of the things that's not on this slide is the beautiful Enfield High School.
Is this gonna go out over the...
So it is gonna...
Okay. No, not yet.
You gotta, you gotta turn that to, you gotta...
I don't know if we need the screen.
No, the screen's for the camera, I think.
Yeah, the screen is...
Yeah, the screen's only for the camera, it's got to show up here.
ETV watches it on that.
There you go, it's down here now.
Apparently that has to be done for this to come on.
Okay.
Oh, all right, I didn't know that, okay.
But, I mean, I mean, the Enfield High School is a magnificent facility, and we didn't put that on there, and we did, there was a tremendous amount of staff effort, the Building Department, the Planning Office, and Rick Rasselli was over there an awful lot, and moving that forward, and we didn't put that on our, on our, on the year-end review. But this is, this is to remind us all, as we get caught up in any individual project, that, you know, what our overall goals are, and, you know, the Plan of Conservation and Development says that the Planning and Zoning Commission is responsible for the health, welfare, and public safety of the community. And you have to balance the needs of neighbors with the, with the needs to provide for employment, and industry, and taxes. And I think that in many ways, in the past year, we had projects where we were able to allow developments to go forward, but also in a manner in which the residents were protected, either from noise, or odor, or, or other things like that. So, Jen, if you want to move it forward, completed construction projects, and the very first one is the 160 Hazard Avenue, I believe it's like 24,000 square feet, 24,000 square feet medical building. That was put up, so medical is one field that is growing in, in Enfield, and we have two others, two other facilities that were approved. Both are urgent care, and we've had a lot of interest in, in growing that field. Next, 25 Bacon Road, you know, one of the things that Enfield is, is resilient. The, the town could have just had a vacant facility up there. Hallmark made a decision to consolidate its facilities in Kansas City, and so we had significant vacant buildings up there. The Community Development Office worked very, very hard with several different entities. The good news is, there was a competition for these buildings, and at one point, we had an aerospace manufacturer who was, who was going to, who was bidding on the project, but when Stanley Company came into town, and they, they saw the potential, we have, we have, at, at this site, the former site of Hallmark, we have a couple of companies that are Fortune 1,000 companies. There was an open house for members of Planning and Zoning at that facility, and did a very nice job. Next one, the High Bay Building is no longer High Bay, they cut the top right off the building. It was a very interesting, and you all know that Rich Suezak is, is an engineer who designs buildings, and he said, wow, when he was reading these plans, I gotta go see how you're gonna do that. You remember when we went up there, and Rich is like, I gotta go see how you're gonna cut the top off a building? And they, they cut the top off the building, and that's up and running. And, and by the way, before, before we go to Camerata, but there's a third building planned on that site. They will be coming forward with a subdivision to allow a split, where the first two buildings will be on one lot, and the, and the new building will be on a separate lot, and they're looking at a building of anywhere from a half million to a million square feet, that will be coming in, in the next few months.
A lot of people that worked at Hallmark are probably glad to see those pictures and see what's happened.
Yeah. And, you know, the other, the other Hallmark site on Manning Road has also been filled up with, with new, new businesses. Those buildings were empty for many, many years, so both, both Hallmark sites have been rejuvenated. Camerata Truck Parts, they, they are expanding in two locations, they took an empty building on 80 Shaker Road, and, and re-tended it. One of the themes we've seen in the last, well, since I've been here, is a lot of the buildings that were vacant have been filled up, and we're now having people say, where can we build a building? What, what do you have? So I think that, you know, the Enfield is at the point, you had vacant buildings, they're filled up, now we're looking at building new buildings. So 80 Shaker Road, Camerata Truck is, is one of them, and they're looking to put in an addition on that building. Next, Press Tech, 230 Shaker Road, this is another, you know, company that actually consolidated their operations from Windsor. Had to say that, Commissioner. They came over from the dark side, and located here, and the, the council approved a tax incentive policy for them within the last two, two meetings. Next, Lea Honda, you know, when people drive up and down Palumbra Drive, and they say, you know, that's how to do an automobile row, I mean, it's really nicely designed, and they did chop the heck out of the trees, and hopefully they're gonna grow back, or they're gonna get a visit from somebody that says, you know, you really need to deal with those trees. But this commission worked with them in terms of, over the years, you approve something, new general managers come in, they don't know what the old approvals were, and a lot of the nice grass areas, some of which were put in because of the wetlands, over there, over the years, they just started parking cars on them. We've got the cars off of those grass areas, and some of them are still over at the mall, but that's been, you know, a facelift put on that building. US Hauling, this is the, the commission recognizing that we need to provide for different ways of generating energy, and this is USA Hauling, using the latest technology for solar panels over an existing parking lot. The crack mound removal, and as I've said, when you drive by that building, if you can't help but notice, wow, I see more of that building than I used to see. It really does make a difference. And Ms. Mullin can now see all the way down the street again. Ms. Mullin used to be able to see all the way down the street, and then that mound went in there, and she looked out into the side of a hill, and now she has her vista again. And that, that required the cooperative effort of the town council, the zoning board of appeals, and the planning and zoning commission. Many members of this commission spent several days down in, down in New Britain in court, negotiating the, that deal, and for those people who don't know, that mound went to the, the town public works landfill, and so that was the settlement of a court case that had gone on for four years. Next, the New Day Church, down on, on King Street, that was an automobile place, I'm told, down on, down, down, down from the street, its latest use was as an AMCO pool facility. That's it under construction. When it's finished, it's gonna look like a church with steeples and things on it, it's gonna be a very nice improvement. And we've heard very positive comments from the neighbors that, that it's, it's a welcome addition to the neighborhood. We just, the commission just approved Peerless Way. This is an existing industrial complex where they have, they really, they really have a niche market over there, it's not self-storage, it's units in which individual contractors, you know, have an office, and for their, for their business, they have their own separate entrance, and they, they can conduct their, their business out of there, and it's been very successful, and I've just, this commission just approved a new, a new expansion of that. And then you got Camerata Truck Parts, the old burnt-out building on there, it's 240 Shaker Road, but it's really down a private driveway, a private road, and that's moving forward. They just were, filed their building permit the other day. And across the street is Yankee Castings, and they also had a fire, and at one point, we had two burnt-out buildings down the end of that private drive. Yankee Castings is, is further along, and they're, and they're rebuilt, and they're going into the Wetlands Commission to, to modify their permit, which will then come here to allow them to build some additional silos in the back to contain that, those mounds that, that are in the back, that developed from, I guess, left over from the previous Yeah, the sand that is there, so, so that's moving along. Northeast Sheet Metal and Industrial Park was approved, is approved for addition, an addition, and that's moving along. Adioli Dodge, I don't know, I mangle that name from time to time, I apologize. They, they were just here for facade improvements. Olive Garden Restaurant, facade improvements. Coles Plaza, for a long time, we've heard from members of the town council, and the Chamber of Commerce, and individual businesses, that we needed to figure out a way to help existing businesses with better signage. This commission worked in, I think, three or four workshops that I can recall, but over, you know, over many, many months, with, with Coles Plaza on developing regulations, they came in with their regulations, which the commission didn't feel that they were appropriate, but were able to develop regulations that in the end, Coles was happy with, and the commission was happy with. So that was a, that was a very cooperative effort with business. And Stop &amp; Shop Plaza has also been approved, and they're gonna build a, a pylon sign, and this is one way to help existing businesses, that they, you know, that they feel the town is working with them. So filling, businesses filling previously vacant spaces, a lot of times, people talk about, oh, it's very difficult, very arduous, tough to do, to get something done. Well, Phoenix Manufacturing moved across the street into this building, they weren't changing anything... They weren't changing anything to the outside of the building. It was an existing approved use, and it didn't even require coming before this commission. It was a sign-off on the building permit. So there are many things that take place that people, you know, we need to report out, that your regulations are not onerous or difficult or hard. Conval on Phoenix Avenue was exactly the same thing. A gentleman called me up from Summers. He'd outgrown a business in Summers, and he wanted to move to Phoenix Avenue. He has over 100 employees. He runs two shifts now. He wants to add a third shift. He moved into Conval the same way. We signed off on a building permit, didn't require any other approval, using the existing site plan, which was up to speed. Ashley Furniture was approved to go into 35 Manning Road. This is another, you know, down the end of the former Hallmark site, and they are just in the process now of completing their certificate of occupancy, and we just got a request to go out and take a look at the improvements, and were they in keeping with this commission? And as often happens, we said, "Gee, we need the ass built." But we will be moving that along. And Ashley's Furniture, this is their distribution center for the Northeast. They have two stores, one in Newington and one in Manchester. And 53 Manning Road, the documents are now ready for the secretary to sign off, if not tomorrow, on Monday, and they will be filing their building permit for the self-storage Party City took over Radio Shack and three other tenant spaces. So again, it's widespread. It's not just industrial buildings, it's not just medical. There is retail, and the message that we have to get out about the town of Enfield is, you know, people say, "Oh, the dying mall." This is part of the mall, in the mall, in the rear of the mall, but we have a very vibrant retail sector in Enfield, and there is, the mall itself, when it was fully, the space in it only represents 25% of that retail area. And so, you know, we have to continually say to people, "Enfield is alive for retail. The mall is not." And we, you know, we're hoping to repurpose the mall, but this is one tenant that did move in and took a chance. TJ Maxx is another retailer that came to town without very much fanfare, and was, I don't believe came to this commission either. It didn't require it. So, you know, that was, you know, that was a very quick and cooperative move. Smash Burgers on Hazard Avenue is there, and we even worked with them to get a patio on a place that, when we started, we didn't think a patio could go there. Fantastic Sam's. Go Health Urgent Care is going in, so a lot of broad themes here. Northeast Medical is going in. Just on the other side is the urgent care facility. And Mark's Restaurant is a terrific example of a former blighted building in Thompsonville Village that a gentleman bought and lodged sweat equity, made a very nice restaurant there, and it's the type of thing that we're working to encourage as part of the whole Thompsonville effort that's going on right now. And there's a whole bunch of zoning regulations. I'm not going to go through each one. We have some examples, so you can just click through it, but we, this commission did complete a whole design overlay for the Skid Row neighborhood. That's something they had asked for. We did an overlay, regulations for the Lake District, so that all of the property owners up there had an opportunity to improve their property without going, having to go to the zoning board of appeals for a variance. Mixed-use business residential in Thompsonville, we allow it. We didn't allow it anywhere else. What this does now is it allows for the possibility that somebody could go into the mall, for example, and rebuild it and have housing upstairs, or we could have, even on Enfield Street, outside of Thompsonville, you could have housing over retail. Mobile food vendors. Our good friend Peter Falk was here to give that plaque to Elizabeth when she was retiring, and he said, "What do you guys ever do with mobile food truck regulations?" And we said, "You know, Peter, we passed them last August." And that was kind of the emphasis for this little PowerPoint we're doing now, because we're saying, if somebody like Councilman Falk, who's our near and dear friend, who sort of doesn't keep up, I mean, we do things, and like, but we don't, you know, we need to get the message out. So yes, you can, there are regulations, they're available, they're online, you can come in and pick them up. If there are mobile food vendors out there, there are ways in which you can operate in the town of Enfield. Then we made a bunch of other changes. We probably clicked through a lot of these. Basically, all of these changes that we did to the regulations allowed for us to have better design of buildings, put buildings close to the street. They also reduced parking requirements, so that, you know, for many years, on our retail areas, we zoned them for the so-called Black Friday, and the rest of the year, the parking sat there. And so this commission recognized that and reduced it. We also, this is just some sort of, you know, number bean counting on the terms, types of things that we do, many different permits that come through, and you can read them And so, you know, this is just some sense of the applications come through. It's a very busy commission with a lot of different agenda items and a tremendous amount of volunteer work on the part of the commission. Next. Bond intakes, you know, we have, we probably have several million dollars' worth of bonds right now, still in place on projects that we're working down through, and that's another function that we devote our time to, yes. And this just sort of highlights some of the things we've done. One of the things we were able to do is take every form that the commission used, update it, put it online, put a manual together. There's no mystery on how we process anything. It's all in black and white, what you have to do, what information is needed. So whether you ask me, or you ask Jen, you ask Raquel, and you ask Rick, we're all going to tell you the same thing as to how do you get a permit. The town attorney, we work very closely with, and I just want to highlight a couple of, you can go to the next slide, a couple of zoning things people aren't aware of, like, they often say, "Well, gee, I made a complaint last week and nothing's happened," or what have you. Well, in terms of a zoning complaint, you first have to determine if it, you know, go out and inspect and determine it, but then there's a whole process. You have to give them notice of violation, they have so much time to correct it, then there's a process, they get a formal cease and desist, then they can appeal that to Zoning Board of Appeals. There's a fine statute in place that the council authorized us, where we can fine people $150 a day per violation. Most things get resolved, because most citizens are law-abiding, and they want to do what's right. We're able to resolve many, many things just by bringing to the attention of the customer. Once in a while, we have to go to court. We had a situation here on Glendale Road, and we had to go to court, and the judge ruled in the favor of the town. There's towns, the fines, there are fines levied on this property as a result of that effort, and that's what happens, is the fines end up being a lien on the property. But this is one situation where a landscaping business, and they had multiple trucks in the yard, this was just a picture of one of them. And then we had a case in which a garage was turned into a house, and we just couldn't get any cooperation from putting it back to a garage, or at least getting the tenant out of there. Went, they appealed to the Zoning Board of Appeals. The Zoning Board of Appeals upheld the cease and desist. The gentleman appealed to court, and the judge ruled in favor of the town, and the situation has been resolved, so nobody's living in that building. And this is some of the issues that we're dealing with now. 350 North Maple Avenue, which is, has an assortment of junk. So that's, you know, it's one of the items that we take up. We've tried to take an approach on enforcement wherever we can. We work with the folks. If we can get compliance, we get compliance. But when we have to, we're working very closely with the town attorney and very cooperative, and we're, I think, the court cases, we've had four court cases, and we, the town has prevailed on all of them, including, of course, the crack case. Looking to the future, there are many, many things we're working on. The River Gateway Project is probably the biggest in terms of the whole area from the river to the train station, over through to the town hall area here. We've had two consultants on board for several months, one primarily working with Mike Schrullow and the Economic Development Commission, the other working primarily with me and this commission, but we are coordinating both of them. And in the spring, this commission will be holding public hearings on that topic, and the goal is to not only put regulations in place to deal with the area right around the train station, but also to improve access to the river, and using the river and the train station as a gateway to our Antalia community. So it's the Enfield Train Station and not the Thompsonville Train Station. And there are the other things that we have on the drawing board that we're working on as well, and there's a whole long list of, we won't put them up there, of things that this commission in workshops over the last year has identified with respect to ways that we can make our zoning regulations more transparent and easier for the customer to use. So I think that, I think that we've been able to listen to our customers and work out ways to move the ball forward wherever possible. And finally, this thing I did not do in workshop the other day, I said to Jen, "Put the list of the commissioners up there, because you're the stars in this presentation." So those are the folk, for our listening audience out there, those are the folks who volunteer their time and show up here two and three nights a month to move the town forward. And finally, I just want to acknowledge the folks that, you know, whose job it is trying to make me look good every time I show up, and that's, you know, Jen and Raquel, Ricardo, Bobby Santinella and Angel Timmerman, who handle all the property maintenance work, and of course, Pam Schweitzer. So with that, I would conclude, and, you know, we're excited at all the things we have on the drawing board to work on.
One quick thing, and a great presentation, thank you, kind of recap the air, but what's going on on 190 up near Broadbrook in that area that...
There's an excavator, and he's put a thing around it. We are aware of it. We haven't tracked down what's going on there. There is, well, I don't want to be flip, but sometimes I can be, but there are some neighbors who would be happy if he knocked it down before we got there to find out what he was doing. It's a blighted gasoline station.
Yeah, you don't know either.
We don't know what's going on, Commissioner. We are aware of it, and we just haven't tracked down yet what they're doing.
Okay, thank you.
Have they pulled the demolition permit?
No, there's no permits been pulled, and so obviously, he has to be, the contract has to be notified to stop whatever he's doing, and it's just been a staffing issue in terms of getting out there and identifying who to give the paperwork to. We have received a number of calls on it.
Yeah, that's the one she's talking about.
Is that right? It's funny, because just at the time that he started doing that, we started getting "see, click, fix" inquiries as to why the town allows that blighted building to be there. So that is the site in which a developer has been around for about a year now, and he's trying to work out something with the neighbors on a redevelopment of that site, but why somebody jumped the gun and started work, I don't know. We just haven't tracked it down yet.
Rogers, would that be on the list of polluted areas because...
It may well be, Mr. Chairman. We just haven't had a moment in the day to deal with it. I think it's been about three days now that I've been aware of it.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion's made to adjourn, all in favor. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, very pro-Jo, progressive.